Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting. We're going to boot the flag. I, by deleting the flag of the United States. One day, undergo that, the invisible, the bringing, bringing justice for all.
Like back in LMS.
Okay, thank you everyone for coming. I'm gonna open the public hearing. The council is reviewing a draft proposal for a short-term rental ordinance as submitted by the Little Compton Planning Board. The council is seeking public comment on the proposal. No votes for adoption will be taken tonight, comment gathering only. And I will say, before we, now that we're open, I've opened it. There's three options after we're done speaking. One would be to schedule another public hearing while we work on a final draft. So the council would get all the information from you folks, the information from the planning board, and we would take that, schedule another public hearing and come back. That's option one. Two would be to send it back to the planning board. That's option two. And the third option would to take no action. So just wanted to put that in everyone's head. There'll be three minutes to speak tonight on this. Please be aware of speaking if you go over. Take a look at everyone's body language. If they're looking at you like it's time to stop, it probably is. And I will say your name a couple of times. That'll also give you a key moment to say it's about to wrap up. So the public hearing on short-term rentals is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing any? No.
You wanna speak?
Oh, you wanna start?
You wanna start?
Oh, dude. Is Mike, is Mike Steers, is Mike Steers here? See him? Oh, Mike, you want, did you wanna start, Mike, just with a quick three minutes? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say, first question is why, why did the planning board go out to drafting an ordinance? And the planning board was under the, we believe, direction of the town councils of short-term rental ordinance. And so doing, we worked with the council, solicitors' office, ordinances from Block Island and Warren. And I think the basic questions that came before us first was shortage of housing. It was a great deal of interest presented to us about the shortage of housing in Little Compton, the fact that short-term rentals were being treated as an investment, buying up housing stock that prevented young people from being able to buy a home in the long term. Well, I think that was the, was the biggest focus. And then was the question about how many short-term rentals do we have? Was that we have, we knew the state lists and the registration there and it going, building up the council bit, or the planning board. There were several short-term rentals that are not registered with the state or gathered for, so there's a need for registration. So we could understand the number of actual short-term rentals that were in effect. Then there was a question with regard to safety, those who vote and making sure that property is good, safe tenants. Then there was a question about who would be accountable for the short-term rental and having the ability for someone to call and get a response in a timely fashion. Which led to, in the draft ordinance, a set of rules that the town would have and be able to enforce with regard to short-term rents. So what we did was draft definitions for things and then rules and how to register inspections by the town, leaving the show or a marshal. So that we were comfortable with properties that were being rented. We stayed away from qualifying the people that were able to have a short-term rental. There were certain towns that we viewed that had a residency requirement. And one of, that's a resident was present or occupied various assortments. So we have a longstanding history in Little Compton of people owning their property, old families renting part of the year in order to pay their taxes, enjoying it another part of the year. And we did not want to get involved in who was gonna be able to have it, but rather that all short-term rentals were registered and safe. So that was what was behind our drafting of the ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, someone, I saw some movement over here. Someone wanna speak? At the public hearing?
Yep.
Just state your name and your address.
I will. My name is Doris Bedford. My husband Rush Cagger is also present in the room. Rush's mother was Dee Osborne, the daughter to Dee Osborne of Lawrence Point Road. We've been in this since, moving to Little Compton since 1985. First, I wanna thank the planning board because I have also been an elected public official and I'm very grateful for the amount of time and effort that went into the research and the thought and discussion and I have previously attended a planning board session. We are the owners of 596 West Main Road, an eight-acre property with a single, we thought five-bedroom, but Dean corrected me today, we're authorized with four, because he checked it out, which our family built in 1996 and we occupy on a regular basis year-round. Since 2023, we have listed our home on VRPO for limited short-term rentals in the off-season only with a state registration number R-B-03347. We have been following developments in short-term rentals since that time, 2023. We have closely read the proposed draft ordinance and generally support the concept of local registration slash permitting and the standards enumerated in the language of the ordinance to what we support the introduction of a municipal registration and to we support the introduction of a permit or a fee. We support these two steps, which allow the town to accrue income based on the state's short-term rental for term real estate tax in order to fund further requirements as needs become clear over time. While we enumerate which elements of the draft, we can support upon immediate introduction of a permit system. I also wanna make some proposals for certain amendments and then throw the requirements that we cannot support at this time. What could or should a registration slash permit require of the property production? As included in the draft language drafted by the planning board, specify the maximum number of occupancy some bedrooms, apartment plan, a required local representative, and the posting of safety information within the dwelling. Not included, but we wish to include registration period of January 1st to March 1st to allow families slash property owners time to consider their annual schedule. As noted by my Mr. Steele, there are a number of these properties that are family-owned and sometimes it takes a while for the cousins to decide when the property is gonna be available for rental, if at all. A strict deadline is unnecessarily punitive to those owners' families who rent a property, property incrementally. We'd also like to see certification of the septic capacity of a front. This is very important to protect a neighbor's groundwater. Renting a one-and-a-half bathroom house with fourteen people currently advertised on Airbnb can't be safe. What we cannot support, at this time, we do not support the idea of a mandatory inspection to be implemented in the first year of this ordinance. There are well over 100 properties listed as active in the state's short-term rental database as of yesterday. It is unrealistically rich that town staff, even with additional support and progress donors, to be able to comply timely for the 2021 season. Our town needs an information gathering stage which will accommodate owners' concerns, owners' education, and for meeting the requirements for compliance. Further considerations, we would like to propose the idea of a courtesy inspection by the zoning officials slash fire chief or their designated in the interim period between adopting the registration permit requirement and the initiation of a mandatory inspection to maintain a valid permit. In addition, we believe submission of a periodic certificate of tonability for properties well should be considered as a future requirement. Attaining such a certificate is somewhat thirty-something in terms of cost and effort and should not be required each year to renew a permit. But I attended the final report of the board last night. I don't see anyone here who's also there. Is that true? Yes, thank you. The great news is that our town developed a baseline of water quality across our land area. The quirky news, a great pH across the entire town, very little contamination, and excellent numbers on the electrolytes, which means we don't seem to have any evidence of saltwater seepage, which has been a great concern here. The quirky news is that some wells reported a small amount of contamination in one or more of their samples. And in fact, my husband and I had a situation recently, a year ago, or two years ago, our wellhead had cracked and we had an contamination issue that was discovered accidentally, but we had to blast the water system. So these things happen. Nevertheless, in the interest of public safety, both for renters and residents, a periodic certification of tonability should Finally, although our house is at 596 West Main, which is not a dense neighborhood. Those neighborhoods are more impacted and we want to be sure that their voices will be in at full weight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Somebody did that.
You were telling.
I didn't. That was over three minutes. Next, does anyone else wanna speak?
What?
Does anyone else like to speak at the hearing?
Comments for every person.
Okay, thank you.
We can, now, I can give you six comments. Sign comments. Um.
That's all.
Thank you.
My name is Tom. I live on John Dyer Road.
Tom, can you address, we address the committee, please?
First, committee, again, what would you do if you had benefits? Technically, but light design.
Tom. Says to lean in a little. There you go.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, committee.
A good start.
Um, so my name, I'm over, I live on John Dyer Road. I have resided in town for fourteen years. If I have a story like all of these. I have a four-bedroom house with three baths. And I thought, oh, yeah, okay. Then I found out just a feeling that my bedroom, my house has only made three bedroom. So this is an important respect for the preparation ordinance. But that we, the town, it's not necessary, it's to be sure that the rentals paid the, that the purpose grows and lives and protects the environment and quality of the earth. So I gave the town council a statement. With my name, so I'll just read when I gave the town. I support Little Compton's adoption of municipal short-term rental policy. Granted, the draft policy has a number of benefits for maintaining the historical character of town we have known and appreciate. Some modifications may be warranted. A rejection of a short-term rental policy, like what happened in 2022, will not be a betterment for this town because the trend of residential properties that have been purchased for primarily or only investment purposes will continue without any limitation if we do nothing. Consider why a buyer, given the intention to reside in L6, when part of your care about the historical character of the town, the law may properly appreciate the value as return of that they have. The points that Mike Steers gave you about this is rhetorical characteristic of rentals in this town. We completely support. It's second homes that are rented when they're not using it or full-time residents who may for a pilot year rent their properties to generate some income, to pay their real estate taxes, their insurance, the mortgage. And in no way do I support, you know, limiting that for rental use of properties. Properties that have been purchased for primarily or only investment purposes, it is adversely affecting the character of this town, particularly some specific neighborhoods. There are, there are parts of this town that have a greater number of properties that have that are only for new or part-time rental only. So it's not just the town, we have to pay attention to specific neighborhoods like Sea Spray, like Tuniper, where there is a greater concentration of properties that have been purchased and are operating essentially, I appreciate, renting. We gotta pay attention to greater neighborhoods, greater town. Mike Steers made a mention that properties that could be used and occupied by families, especially with children, taken off of use this town and affects our school and our school's future. No kids at our school. School, school can operate and still know what you have, whereas some people here that they went to. What a travesty if the school you went to when you grew up is closed because there's no more kids in town. We meant this.
Uh, you're over. Yes.
Not surprising. May I have another minute?
One, one minute.
The proposed short-term rental policy does not restrict any owner's opportunity to rent. The only cost it requires is an annual fee, which is a fraction of one day's rental. And the arrangement of a representative to be present within two hours of reported rental problems, such as noise or parking. An annual fee will cover all or most of the compliance and enforcement of the town ordinances. The remittance of a state short-term rental tax will surely cover the rest. And this is an issue for any ordinance. You can write it, but you can don't enforce it. Then it will be happened. Let us show respect for the owners that have bought a growing number of rental properties and to better maintain what's left of the town's store of care of them will be mostly lost without enacting policies that try to preserve it.
That sounds like a good end. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah. Or someone?
I have, following, thinking about Rampon Road Association, I've reached out to a bunch of folks that rented theirs. This is kind of informal poll of their questions and views. The first thing that came up from three of the people that rent their homes is this seems like a solution in search of a problem. Sharing with you the opinions. Secondly.
Microphone. Microphone and Doris.
I'm tied up. I was about.
And then, item or section four, the Little Compton Registration and Inspection, item D down below, one resident pointed out that inspections probably can't take place when the property is occupied by a renter without that renter's provision. So they may wanna incorporate some language in the penalty. Representative for the property cooperated getting the renter's agreement to allow these are questions for the rental. That's a subsequent suggestion. Tom mentioned that the cost was a fraction. The copy that I have doesn't contain any costs included in it. So I assume that'll come along, but it's hard to say. This sounds like a great idea without knowing costs. Those were multiple observations from those two. And then finally, while I'm at my time here, a clarification on section seven, A number one, web address, that is, web address that will be attached to the document we have proposed to go home. It just wasn't, either way it was written, at least it wasn't clearly posted. I yield the rest of my town's time.
All right, we have it for time. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, mine.
Good evening. My name is Michael Chase. I'm a second-generation owner.
Yeah.
Oh, I too. Seventh-generation owner of property on Lawrence Point. I would have loved to have input from my neighbors, but none of us had any notice of this meeting, much less the topic until until someone got a hold of it somehow. Still don't know how. I just heard about it yesterday. As far as our registration, those of us that have to rent our houses in order to pay the taxes and to be able to use it at least some part of the year, or a summer house, we have only a narrow window of time at our costs and the last, my costs, this in the next eighteen months will go up eighty-six percent. So looking at any other fee of any kinds is difficult, I guess, won't. I think going forward, if you're looking for a registration to house, rents, all of us have to be registered with the state, so there's, there's that data mix already. I thought that maybe we'd have that in place. But I think my final point would be, if there are discussions about short-term rentals, would you please make sure that all of us that are involved in short-term rental, whether we need to, have to, or desire, it would be great if we could be informed at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Just someone over here that stood up.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Green Carroll and I live at 48 Ocean Drive at Indian Rock Hakers. My in-laws, my husband's parents purchased the property in 1953, which is when they built a small cottage right on the water. I mean, it's not on the water, it's in back in the water, but it's hopefully will always be sitting back in the water.
Another discussion.
It goes to mind, sure. We raised our kids to come here every summer, just like my husband did. He was a kid. And all of these, all of these neighbors in Tucket wondered about why on earth anybody would build a house thirty-five miles away from Tucket. I'm not that so far. Go there every summer? What a trek. But anyway, we have someone from Virginia every summer. We were here during summer. But the house is a year-round house and we do rent it. And the reason we rent it, because when we inherited it, we had to take out a second mortgage in order to keep, a mortgage in order to keep the place standing. And so we poured every penny that we get from the rentals into the house to keep it, basically keep it standing and keep it nice. Paying it every three years, you know, all that sort of stuff you have to do when you live around the water. I am very supportive of this. I think it's a really good idea. I used to grow up by the ocean in Virginia and we could try to get this passed in our community forums, but found a long hill to have. The biggest issue that I've got, which was already mentioned, is the issue of the septic. Our septic, like the others that mentioned it, we've built a three-bedroom house, two-bedroom house. And we have four bedrooms that are, that are down part of the house. So what I would hope is that if you decide that you'll go forward with the idea of at least with the requirement of subjects that, to upgrade them, if they're not in the right shape, that we would be given a certain amount of time to be able to do that. It's a really expensive process these days. I think it's about, what, forty thousand dollars for an alternative system, which we probably have to do. And it would probably take us a couple of years, maybe three or four years to build it, get the money to do that. So I support the effort to pull this together, I mean, to, to the ordinance. I know it's required by state that we do this, right, here in Little Compton?
No.
It's not? Okay. Well, nonetheless, I know what it's like to be in a community where you really have a lot of these. So that would be my major comment, is that the septic issue is very expensive for anybody and certainly for us. And so we would, it would be really nice to have something leeway there to get, to get it up and going, probably the reasonable balance of management. The rest of the, the rest of the requirements right now, we probably would qualify alone, so don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What else?
Andy.
Good evening. My name is Vincent. They from road. Uh, first I'd say that I, the draft I thought was exceptionally well drafted. Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, one is, uh, the number of properties this would, uh, this regulation would. Impact. It's not clear to me. There was a mention if there was a hundred. Um, but I suspect that at least in the past, much of the property was listed through, uh, real estate agencies rather than online. So. In my mind, there needs to be greater clarity on the number of properties involved. Um, I'd also be interested in understanding what the anticipated revenue for the town would be. Um. Additionally, it's not clear to me what the staffing requirement for the town would be in terms of FTE. Uh, there was a mention of dual inspectional services, but there's registration. Um, and cashiering as well as, um, follow-on compliance. So the staffing requirement is not clear in my, in my head. Um. I think it might also be, um. Advantages to think in terms of a ninety-day rather than a thirty-day. Uh, this would put on the table the entire seasonal rental as opposed to just the short term. Uh, and lastly, um. Particularly with regard to those properties that, for lack of a better term, I'll describe as investment properties. Um. Rather than a registration and fees, might, might the town consider, um. Taxation and other than a residential rate? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do I have someone else? I do. Gentleman with the hat.
And Andy Ryan, I'm forty page of Brook Road. Uh, I wanna, I have been in attendance for many of your council meetings about short-term rentals going back to probably twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. And as many of the planning board meetings as I possibly can. And, um, I appreciate that we continue to talk about this topic and I'm really excited that there actually might be something that happens. Um, I support strengthening your proposed ordinance. Uh, I think the strat really isn't yet effective. Um, I'm very concerned that the town has not have any proposed limits. On the number of permits they would provide, and I think there's room for that. I would like to see the town updating, update its zoning to protect year-round housing in neighborhoods. Uh, I think that. It's unquestionably true that there's been a huge growth in, in short-term rentals in, in town. And it really has harmed housing. I don't think there's any question to that. I think the town has a long history. I grew up in a beach town. It has a tremendous history of. You know, seasonal rentals, and I understand that and appreciate that. I think that's really important to the town, but, but we need to be, be mindful of that. Um, I don't think the state law gives everyone in town the right to have a short-term rental. And I think that is important, that it doesn't codify everyone's right to rent their house, uh, as a short-term rental. And I think you need to take it, take that and work with that. Um, I would ask that you clarify what regulation you're regulating these business, this as a business opportunity, uh, for short-term rentals of, of, of non-resident. Or non, I don't know, it's a business actually. I would encourage, I would encourage you to increase the permit fees, especially for non-resident owners who are renting them but live out of town. Uh, you know, daily rates are five hundred dollars a night, uh, in the season. I would cap, uh, the number of available short-term rental permits. Uh, and then step those down over time and allow you to, to study and determine what's the sustainable number in town for available short-term rentals. And have that metric somehow tied to attainable or affordable housing. Uh, I, I think you ought to have some automatic revocation with real triggers. So if someone violates a major, if they're a major problem, they don't need a town council hearing to remove their permit. It just automatically occurs. Um, and then I would, I would really, uh, encourage you to think about a minimum stay. Cause daily turnovers can really impact neighborhoods a lot. Um, and, and you should consider that. And then I really would encourage you to, to ask the zone, the planning board to, to look at zoning and rezone the town. Uh, with, with concentration in mind. I, there's a couple of short-term rentals in our neighborhood and a couple aren't a big deal at all. But when your neighbor, your other neighbor and the neighbor beside you are all short-term rentals, you don't have a neighborhood anymore. So I think that's what you need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a hand right here. Denise, you're next in the back.
Back.
In the back, there you go. Your next in the front.
I'm a local magnolino way, I'm a tax assessor. Um, I have been saying for years that short-term rentals have been driving the assessed prices through the roof. Um, we have reports from universities in Rhode Island to legal cities and towns and they basically say. Um, it's a neighborhood's convenience and, you know, obviously in place. I think this, this is the beginning of the discussion. Like everyone's saying, there's a lot of concerns. And I think we need more specifically being according. Cause we have a lot of staffing, a lot of, one of them is fire protection. And one of them is possible going on to. There's going to be a lot of, uh, assessed, so I think we need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This gentleman here. Thank you.
Name is Noah Pachey.
Anyway.
Uh, have a property I live at, um, and rent part of it at fifty-six B and Road here in Little Compton. And I, I've listened to a lot of people tonight talking. I don't, I'm, I'm. It's hard for me to understand. There's something happened that's changed the dynamics of, of what's going on in the past thirty years. So many people have been renting properties around here and I don't know if there's been an impact or some negative things that have created this, uh. This new, new direction. No other towns have, have experienced it, but our town is relatively all seems to be, you know, controlled. We, we live in our property and we don't hope, because we have an abundance of money, even do it because we. Can take the extra money that we make and either put it into our property or continue living in the spot that we've learned to love. Um, I'd hate to have anything jeopardize that and, uh, rule upon rule, I'm just starting to get pretty concerned that, uh. Um, and down the road, there's going to be, uh, ways that, that you don't. Call by or something isn't right, or you haven't put in this system and, and want to hold up money. It's a concern. I don't want to put anyone in jeopardy that's, uh, here renting. The town itself, as you know, is suffering from a, a lack of places for people to stay. Unless they go to one of the surrounding towns. We, uh, we are a source of bringing in a lot of revenue into this area. Unfortunately, we don't have restaurants anymore that have spent it. But we do have the people that come here and are willing to spend their money, um, more than just going to the beach. It's a people life and then we all love it and want to keep it, you know, in, in great shape. Um, you know, that, I mean, I heard someone mention, uh, keep up the, the. The charm of Little Compton. Don't we have things in, in place right now that people can't, there's, build a, a home that's not appropriate to the setting? I'm not sure what a rental, um, would do that would offset, offset that. I think part of the reason people come to Little Compton is because of the charm. Um, I'm not afraid of certain conditions and, uh, and some. Some, some kind of, um, structure that we would need to, to change them. Uh, it's probably necessary, but I get concerned because, you know, you're starting to talk about, um. Just a little part of your one-day rental, uh, we're all, I, there's so many different ways people rent here. So people do get five hundred a night or seven hundred a night for these big homes. You know, I, I'm getting a hundred and seventy-nine a night, so I'm not lumped in with everyone. We're all unique, I guess, in so many ways, but. Um, I don't know if a cookie cutter approach that we all have to fit into is gonna, um, be fair to, you know, what, all the residents that have this rental property. And I just wanted to add someone here, what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Who have a hand?
I'm going to see parts of our. I just wonder how much unintended consequences there will be from making it so difficult to rent. Um, what I perceive as a lot of these people with legacy houses, you know, you can just raise the rent so much. I mean, this year there's an overabundance of taxes and, and you, you know how we've been. That's been happening. Um, but it just seems that a lot of the legacy houses with these poor, poor people, I don't. Well, people who have money to spend, they don't bring in kids into the town. They take away, you. Renters support, who's force will restore, you know, the renters and what would not be like without will restore. So I just think there'll be a lot of unintended consequences that probably want to be taken. So how many people actually have to be forced to sell their houses who will buy them? And is that what we want in Compton to become?
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? We got one. Knew if I said it twice, somebody would jump up.
There's been a lot of, I'll say. Micro turn one fourteen, call over. They're saying a lot of assumptions made tonight that Airbnb's or Airbnb, short-term rentals. They can bring values down on the neighborhoods. And I would disagree with that. Can you show me? Nobody has come up and presented that to us. What does it do? Where does it do? Where are the facts? Is it really a safety issue because you're targeting the people that rent less than thirty days? If it's really a safety issue, as I've heard tonight about wells and neighborhoods. Wouldn't that be already addressed in the homes that are there? If you were having, if your neighbor was having a problem with their septic system. What's the difference if it's a thirty-day rental? Or if somebody has year-round? I do feel that yes, the short-term rentals abuse of business. I also feel like the rentals are being targeted in this town. Are we going to start to go after every small business in town instead, instead of implementing them? Instead of charging them registration fees? Many contractors in this town already paid a fee to the state. Short-term rentals pay a fee to the state. It's almost like you guys want to micromanage everything that everybody's doing and all the businesses in town. Little Compton has always been a town that is allowing people to work out of their homes, own businesses out of their homes. Try to work with the people in town. This to me sounds more like I don't want the short-term rental in my factor. This is what this sounds like to me. We're trying to control the neighborhoods. I understand, uh, this brings in tax revenue. To the town at one percent, which ends in J. It's going up to two percent as of January first. The state of Rhode Island has taken an additional five. I think that's where we should have been spending our time. We should have been spending our time with our, with our relatives. Advocating that we get more tax revenue to the town. Not this two percent that they're trying to give us. And as far as the notification, I understand it was put in the paper last week. But if there is really, I know that there's more than a hundred short-term rentals in this town. And if you're trying to affect what they're doing. It would have been nice that if everybody was notified. Taking the time out to notify them, you're going to affect them. Whether they show up or not, that's on them. As far as coming up with the Nordland's after this, I am, I am definitely against it. Not to say that I wouldn't entertain more of a, if there was more people involved to get more response. This audience tonight is definitely stacked against the, the short-term rentals. I would like to see the people that it's known to affect as well, to hear both sides of the story. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Sure, go ahead.
Travis Audi, too pleasant you drive. Um. I'm also a realtor in town, so I do have a little bit of scope on this. Uh, just a couple of concerns. First off, thanks to the planning board for their thoughtfulness in putting this together. Um, I am the liaison to properties in multiple communities throughout the state that have already enacted this short-term ordinance. Um. So I, I understand that it's a conversation that we, we can continue to have. My two concerns tonight are our, are our resources, both natural and municipal. Um, as a realtor, I may have a house that has five bedrooms in it. But if I have a three-bedroom septic, I need to represent that as such. And if people are putting their Airbnb's online, um, and misrepresenting. The capacity of the dwelling that needs to be addressed. I think that that's very important. The second port, part of the resource is our municipal resources. I think Denise spoke to it tonight. Um, I'm thinking of the clerk's office. I'm thinking of the fire marshal. I'm thinking of the tax assessor. I'm thinking of Dean Maderos. Um, all these folks, uh, that will have to come into a property annually. I just don't think, I think that's a little redundant. Um, and I think we need to be very thoughtful about how we're taking our municipal workers' time and allocating it to the community. Um, the third piece is. You know, I was on the registration this morning for the state. There's a hundred and eighty-five registered properties, both active and inactive. So there's a hundred and eighty-five. In talking with folks that have served as realtors in this town far longer than my time. They believe there could be upward to five hundred short-term rentals. So I, I think it's important that there is some sort of incentivization for those that are participating in the short-term rental. I don't believe that they should be, uh, penalized for, for registering with the state. Uh, I don't necessarily think a tax is, is the answer. What I will say is. People cheat because they think they won't get caught or the consequence is not dire. And if you are to have a short-term rental that is not registered with the state. And let's say our police force is called to your dwelling. And there is found to be not only a violation of law, but then also a violation of. The number of people that should be allowed in that dwelling. I think that the penalty should be very severe. Um, I don't think it should be severe or there should be a penalty for those that are registered and those that are operating short-term rentals. I think as Michael stated, we have, uh, a long history of in-home businesses in this community and we need to protect that. I myself know several people that are hard workers that have, that are generational. That have purchased properties in this town and use them as supplement for a form of income. Um, I will, to quote one of them, Travis, I don't have a 401K. I was fortunate to buy property in this town before. Twenty twenty. So I think we need to protect those folks that invested in this community and continue to. And just really be thoughtful to those folks that, that, that are going to be impacted. And those folks that are, uh, have done it for generations and those folks that have played by the rules, registered with the state. Um, so I know that this is the start of the conversation, but I really just hope that the, the community, uh, can continue to be thoughtful of the dialogue.
Thank you. Anyone else? There you go. I got another one. Other by the apple. Come on up.
Apple Steve.
I just want to emphasize what was said throughout that. I think a lot of this is generated and through what the University of Rhode Island has stated is that it's happened because of the ability to rent from people coming from other places, not the people who've lived here forever, who need to supplement their income so they can keep their properties. It's because of the other people coming in and seeing a business. And we need, and it specifically says, the report specifically says, we need some kind of enforcement mechanism. Like Travis just said, I think it also says, maybe for our registration, we could just no fee. This is people registering or we could take the information from the state's website and say, these are registered short term rentals. And then if people do not apply, that's when the enforcement and penalties are added. And that is, you know, this is a discussion that should happen. We should have a separate ordinance to start with, I think, and then maybe improve it later. If you have thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Sal, come on up.
I think mostly no one, I'm not speaking of the planning board, I'm speaking of the cell. A plan was asked for and we delivered a package I thought was a good package. I've been here twenty-six years. I don't want to be the guy that came into Little Compton and took my rules with me. And said, I want to change the town because I really don't want to change the town. I love the town. And I think we have to be very careful and be slow about this. You have a package in front of you. That doesn't mean you have to do something about it right away. I think this will take a lot more talking about. I've talked to a lot of people since we put this package together. Mike and I have talked about it. We, we did the best we could, but you know, the information we had. But I, I think there's a little overreach in it. I think it stresses the town in the wrong way. It puts more burden on the town hall at a very bad time. And I think that we can live with the state regulations right now. And rely on the state registration. And take a look at maybe minimum housing before we do that. Maybe a minimum housing officer before we do that. That would take the burden off the building official and a zoning official. It would also somebody in, in that line that could visit a property or keep those properties in mind on a daily basis instead of visiting to sign off on something. I just think more, more time has to be taken to look at this and put a better package together. Thank you.
Mono, Kristen.
Really just wanted to say something about the numbers.
Mono, you have to, so the people that are watching can, can hear you on TV.
Hi, I'm Kristen Silveira. I live at sixteen Old Main Road and we, my husband and I do have a couple of short term rentals here. But what I wanted to mention is I dug into the numbers a little bit. I went through who was registered on the state. And there's a hundred and sixteen active rentals. A lot of those folks in there are actually duplicates because say you had a house that was managed by person A, but person B now took over, so they closed that first one and they opened that second one. So a lot, I found quite a few that were actually the same address duplicate numbers. So right now it's a hundred and sixteen. I think the last time when we talked about this, I remember a couple of years ago, and there was like eighty-eight. So there hasn't been a huge increase from there to here. So that was my only two cents.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you. Think we know what I'm gonna say. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We're gonna close the public hearing.
I've got some comments.
We're gonna close, we're gonna keep the public.
So.
Hearing open.
I also looked on the state website and I found that there was a hundred and sixteen STRs. Whether they're active or not, I'm not sure. It doesn't say. It just gives the address. So. You know, just because other towns are doing this. I know you went to Block Island. Sure, there's a problem at Block Island. Everybody knows that. There's problems in Newport. I don't think there's a problem here. How this all started was when COVID hit, people were coming into Little Compton out of New York, Connecticut, places like that to get away from COVID. Okay? So there was a few people, maybe six or seven people that had short term rentals next to them. And those, those short term rentals were a problem. They were creating noise, parking problems. And so we had a public hearing on it. We got their input. Then about a month later, I actually proposed a short term rental ordinance that wasn't very restrictive. And I was gonna put that forward. But the next public hearing, everybody that had short term rentals that wanted to comment on it came and there was probably twenty people that said we shouldn't do anything. So as my recollection was, we didn't do anything. And maybe or maybe not, we gave it to the planning board, but that had to be two years ago. So why they're bringing it up now, I don't know. This is a solution to a problem that I don't believe exists. And what I don't see in here was the problem that we had. I don't see him addressing anything about noise or decibel readings. I don't see him, anything in here that it says it must adhere to all local and state ordinances. I think registering with the town is redundant. You register with the straight, uh, state, it costs you money. And then it has to be a registrar. Who's that gonna be? Is it gonna be Denise? Is it gonna be Heather? Who's gonna take all these registrations in? Are we gonna put another person in town that's gonna cost fifty thousand for that person, plus its health insurance? Plus whatever else perks they get. So it would be another person to do the registration and take care of these for another hundred thousand dollars. Is that what we want to do? So and then this registration fee, I'm not gonna discuss that. And any registration that lasts cannot be renewed until the following December thirty-first. So somebody what it says here, you have to re- register by December thirty-first for the following year. So if you miss it and you don't make it till January, you can't re- register it for the next year. So you got, you can't rent it for a whole nother year. And as far as putting the fire chief in there, I asked him, he said the only time he can go into a building is for a certificate of occupancy when the building's built. He can't go in there. Now, maybe somebody will say, okay, you can come into my building, look at it, that's something different. But he can't say, I'm gonna come in your building and check all your fire equipment. Okay, so that's how. And so no provision in this chapter, which is six A. No provision in this chapter shall be construed as permitting short term rentals where said rental is prohibited by zoning ordinance or other applicable law. I'm not sure that we have anything about short term rentals and maybe this is what this is, but is this gonna be prohibitive for anybody to do it? And then when it comes to a designated rep authorized by owner. So what you're saying is, there's gotta be an owner within two hours, which I think is a good thing. But some of these people leave town and they rent out for short terms. So they're not gonna be here. So you have to put a designated representative authorized by the owner. So that he can be available if this goes through. And, and in penalties. Bang, violation of any provision of this chapter shall be subject to a fine of five hundred dollars per day for each day of the violation. So if somebody's renting out and one of the renters parks on somebody else's lawn, is that a violation that's gonna cost that guy five hundred dollars? I think it should go along with licensing of six dash seven point five penalties, which the first offense is a warning. Second offense, a hundred, third offense, two hundred, fourth offense, five hundred and or revoke, revocation of suspension of license. Now, I think it should be first offense, a hundred, third, uh, second offense, two hundred and fourth offense, five hundred, or you lose your license. Okay? And then what's the difference between a short term rental and a full term rental as far as water or septic goes? All of a sudden you're saying, oh, short term rentals are gonna be using all kinds more water. They're gonna deplete the well. They're gonna overload the septic system. If you can only have two, two people per bedroom, that's all you're probably gonna have on a household that has two parents and, and two bedrooms and four kids, that's gonna be more than a short term rental. So I don't know what the brouhaha is on that. And just because we mandate registration, that doesn't mean people are gonna register. Okay? We're registered with the state already. That's mandated by them. Anybody that has one has registered with them. And some of these short term rentals are done to supplement paying town taxes because our taxes have gone up. And I don't blame people for doing that. There was a lady here at the public hearing that says she rents out one of her rooms to somebody, the same person every year. And if she's not allowed to do that, she's gonna have to sell her home because she won't be able to pay the taxes. So, I mean, I think this, this is a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. If you wanna do something, that's fine. One of the things I'm really irked about is a five hundred dollar fine for a first offense. And, and it's not even, what is an offense? It's not spelled out in this. I mean, if you're gonna put an ordinance together, let's see what the offenses are. Is it parking on somebody else's property? Is it noise? That's what people came to us about at the first public hearing. It was noise. Okay? Loud noise, people staying up till eleven to twelve o'clock, having parties. That was the problem. Not septic, not water, not anything else. I don't see anything in here about that. So what, I mean, I know there was some thought put into this. But the thought that was put in doesn't curtail the problem that was brought to us. So that, that's basically what I wanted to say on this.
Okay.
Thanks.
We'll have an active public hearing because I didn't close it. If anyone else would like to jump in at the end, that would be the time. I am going to close the public hearing. Thank you for all your comments. And this is a gathering activity and I thank you all for it. I will say to the council, do you have options we can do now? We can send it back. We can take it. We can take no action. Anyone who would like to make a motion? Don't see a motion. I'm gonna put that under no action right now. Of course, we can come and do any action we want in the future. Thank you very much. Thanks. And we'll move on. Next thing on the agenda is announcements. Are there any announcements?
I have one.
We have an announcement.
I would like to announce the excellent news that the State of Rhode Island's rankings came out and Wilbur McMahon School ranked number one in ELA math and science, swept all three. And I just want to say congratulations to the teachers, the administrators, the students and the families that support them.
That's a good announcement. Thank you. Approval of minutes?
Approval of minutes is September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, town council meeting, unless anybody wants to call anything for consideration.
Second.
Aye.
Department head reports.
Washington place the department head reports on file unless anybody wants to call a department head report for discussion.
Second. Thank you. All business. Receive and consider approval of an amendment to Little Compton Agriculture Conservancy Trust standing rules and regulations per existing legislation. Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve those.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? If there are no objections, I would like to move up new business four. Up to the front. Any objections? Thank you. Discussion for joint director of senior social services and assistant position. That is number four. Happy to see Sue Sisson here. I don't know how many times we can thank Sue for all her years of doing this job. So, thank you. I'm gonna turn this one over to Ms. Talbot to kind of explain where we are with this.
Sure, thanks. So, yes, thank you, Sue. We received her, her letter of resignation with great regret and that was maybe a couple of months ago. And since then, she and our director of senior services, Pamela Coward, have been in regular communication about this transition. And what we learned from them was that Pamela's role as a director of senior services grew more into a one-on-one liaison role as opposed to a social director role. Mostly providing direct services to seniors that needed them for all manner of things such as housing assistance, food assistance, transfer of social security benefits to an online portal. A lot of logistics stuff that Pamela was able to help them with. So what, as Pamela described it to us, her services, she found were overlapping with, with, to some degree with what might traditionally be thought of as the social service director's role. And so she came to us along with Sue and, and made a proposal to consolidate upon Sue's retirement, the role of social direct, social director and senior service director into one. And so we were interested to hear about that. Pamela drafted a proposal, Sue reviewed it and, and approved it. And that proposal creates a new, sort of a spinoff or a carve out, if you will, of a very part-time, up to ten hours a week senior activity coordinator. So the idea would be Pamela would essentially take on the tasks of the social service director, incorporate them. And then we would create a new position for a senior activity director. So that was explained to us and Pamela drafted job descriptions for both and Sue reviewed them and approved them. And, and we've discussed it with them. And that is, that's the proposal tonight.
So what I'd like to do is get a, a motion. And a second hopefully, and then we'll have a big discussion if we need one. Do I have a motion?
I can make a motion.
Oh, you wanna make one?
Sure.
All right.
I move to consolidate the role of the director of social service with the director of senior service to a new director of senior dash social services. And Pamela Coward would continue in that position subject to a suitable contract reviewed and approved by the solicitor with a three month term to, for review by the council. And create a new position for a senior activity coordinator up to ten hours a week. Again, with, subject to a suitable contract reviewed and approved by the solicitor and with a three month review period.
I'm gonna second that or run to discussion. I have a hand. Larry, go ahead. Mrs. McNeil, I saw your hand. Second, it was a close second, but you're next.
I just said sort of a technical question. My recognition is that what you would be, is the position. I tried to type right this, this.
It's kind of a tongue question.
It did that, my recognition by council resolution. And I totally have some of the records in front of me, but at, at this to entertain like this at a time when we're also considering things like many of the charter, I'm trying to make sure that this listener could advise you as to whether this, this reposition be modified either in the ordinance stand or the charter. I think the seniors, the social services could just be of whatever the historical name of the league and usually seems as social. seemed as, so, uh, social, maybe in the charter, so I think a question for, for, um, proper need documentation. So, so now it's eventually ordered to charter, there's no mention of the senior, of the senior position, you created last year, uh, by resolutions, I'm just going forward and wait to find, keep an eye on existing documentation on, on, that's the position.
Under the, under the Elliott case, uh, counsel by motion can amend, uh, duties of a specific, uh, position. This isn't a new position. This is merely creating some, uh, adding some, uh, duties and subtracting some duties to this. The other one, I think it's appropriate to have it, um, advertised. But again, that's a situation where you have an existing position where there's going to be a subtraction of some duties and an addition of some duties. It's appropriate to do by motion.
Larry, are you, are you alluding that this should be some reference to the senior director in the charter?
Well, I, it's, it's a legal question.
Yeah.
Just saying that the way things, these things develop.
Hmm, yeah.
Different pieces, and we live with them, that we have an opportunity this year, this year, we'll be considering this, this year, we're just, just, the new commission, to look at the consistency of our treaty of, on some of these positions, whether someone need to be in the charter or not, uh, or whether they should be, but it's just a matter of consistency for the future, for, for, for future reference.
You, you.
It's just something, it's, it's an opportunity this year to keep on these.
You can certainly, uh, consider adding this position to the town charter.
Right.
At the reasonable time. But for purposes of what you're doing tonight, uh, this is lawful, and in fact, uh, there's Supreme Court decisions that allow you to do what you're doing.
Yes. I've always been of the mind to just leave it as an ordinance because they're on a charter change, you obviously have to go to, uh, financial, uh, uh. Yeah, okay.
Do you have a hand up, Jennifer?
Neil, what's next?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Mrs. McNeil is next. Then Jennifer? So you'll come up and please speak into the microphone when you come up, Jennifer, for your question after Mrs. McNeil.
Claudia McNeil.
Hold the microphone up. You're welcome.
Claudia McNeil, I, I like the idea of Jim, um, and, I mean, Jim Coward being the social services director, if they add her reports to the town councils from since, from when she was hired, I think that's a perfect job for her to be the social services director. She's not been as successful as a senior services director, but I think all the towns should still be the twenty hours a week for each, because I think when you make, uh, the senior activities director, be only ten hours a week, I think you're minimizing the importance of the seniors in town. And the whole reason why we, I mean, we were all behind making that decision initially because of the needs of the seniors. So it's not how great as a social services director, I think it could be the other. Um, but I would like to see that this whole positions remain on the, and I think, and in the charter too, there, now there will be two positions, right? I mean, we had the senior, we had the, uh, social services director, and then now we're going to have the senior services director. But anyways, that's, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I, I want to respond to Mrs. McNeil, um.
Perhaps that.
Yeah. So anyways, we did discuss the letter previously in executive section, and I had some concerns about it also. And that's why in the motion we put that it was going to be a three-month review.
Yeah, so that's good.
To see exactly if the coordinator or the person that works with the seniors needs fifteen hours, and the director only needs twenty-five. But I, I mean, if we give her thirty hours now, it's going to be hard to cut her back to twenty-five. But I, so, I mean, I think, well, just have to review that. What comes from it, comes from it.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Great. So I think Claudia, uh, Jennifer Flather, six, nine, Altar Road. Um, I believe Claudia mentioned it, but we have actually, as part of the charter provision, um, we did reach out to Pam to ask for the verbiage to include in the charter since the social, social services director is also currently listed in the charter. Uh, but my second question, and I might just have missed, not heard it correctly, in the combination of these two positions into the social services slash senior services director, is that now becoming a full-time position?
No.
Like I said, I might have missed this.
Part-time.
Thirty hours.
Thank you.
No ben, no benefits, Jennifer.
Gentleman was ahead.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, Andy Ryan, forty, Fender Road. Um, so as the, I'm, I'm the chair of the Budget Committee, and I'm, I just want to be clear, we're talking about our item seventeen and eighteen, and the two thirty-one thousand dollar.
Three one eight hundred and thirty-one five hundred, and sixty-three, three, sixty-three three hundred is the total for those two, the two positions, or on a forty-eight week because, you know, can't give them vacation. So it's on forty-eight weeks and comes out, I think, to like ten, twelve, ten dollars, I think. If that's what you're asking.
Well, yeah, and, and then just from our hearings, I don't know if it was in the public hearing, or if it was then just a comment from someone from the audience, they questioned the value of the, of, of some of these positions based on what they felt like they were doing. I think it was somebody who talked from the shuttle, who said that they were doing more outreach than the social. I'm not, I'm not projecting the effect or, or anything. I just want you to know that you need to make sure that you're collecting data to demonstrate the benefit and the impact.
Thank you. Any other comments while we're in discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, thank you. All right, we'll go back up to one for those who are following. Received bids for ball roadside mowing grass and brush along town roads. Consider referral or award a bid.
Oh.
And Heather, our deputy clerk, if anyone noticed, we have Carol missing tonight. I was hoping she'd be here. Carol is, uh, retiring December fifth, will be her last meeting. So I was hoping we, she would be here, we could say nice things in front of her, but she's not here. Uh, but we have, we have Heather, who is outstanding, and our deputy clerk, and she's been here many times. Uh, and she'll be, uh, probably taking over, I guess. You want to open it up, though?
We have one bid. One bid.
Uh, received from Rich McGee and Sons Excavating, R M Construction of one hundred Hollyberry Road, Little Compton. The, oh, you can't hear me, I'm sorry. Uh, this is received from Rich McGee and Sons Excavating, R M Construction, one hundred Hollyberry Road in Little Compton, uh, for a total of twelve thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to award the bid to, uh, R M McGee. Do I have a second? I have a second. Jessica, move it over.
Aye.
Thank you. New Business Two, request from Town Clerk and Director of Senior Services for the council to vote on a transportation bus use. A, purchased above mandated that it must serve off. Older bus owned separately by town, consider allowable uses. Bitter chain of command for final approval of request for use. Finally, D, interlocal trust ensures the town. Recommendations with regard to volunteer drivers. But I will say, um, I like to thank all the volunteers that work with the bus. It's a huge success. And, um, I can't, you know, what would we be without this service and without the people that are volunteering for it? Um, so what I'd like to do, there's a lot here. I would like, if the council allows me, to make a motion to name an ad hoc advisory committee, charge that committee to bring back a recommendation to council at our meeting on, on November twentieth on this issue, and I'd like to name Michael Rocha, Barbara Rocha, Carol Wardell, who's not here, Bob Muskin, and John Gabriel. Second. Twenty, did I say, what did I say?
Said the twentieth.
I said the twentieth. Are you right?
November.
Deputy clerk, when is our next meeting? Because I think I'm right.
The twenty-third.
Yeah, I was wrong. Twenty-third, November twenty-third.
October. Wait.
That is not the next meeting. That's two meetings away.
October twenty.
Well, you know what? I, I, I think we're going to need time, and I wrote November twentieth, which is, which is a meeting day.
Okay.
Yeah. Did I say next meeting? I didn't mean to say next meeting.
Thanksgiving is, is twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, November twentieth is our next meeting?
Yep.
I mean, not our next meeting.
Me, our first meeting in November is the sixth, the second meeting is the twentieth.
Thank you. So my motion is for the twentieth.
November.
Of November.
Could you state those names again, please?
I can state of Michael Rocha, Barbara Rocha, Carol Wardell, Bob Muskin, and Jonathan Gabriel. And that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Would you like to, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
When we come back from that meeting, we will have a report by the council on the actual usage of the bus. As we did after the first year, we'll have how many people riding, how many miles have been traveled, and the amount of hours have been put in. But I just wanted to make it down that since, uh, sorry, since March of this year, till November of this year, we've actually fulfilled nineteen special requests to have to use the bus, which transported, uh, just over two hundred and sixty people in that short time. Between today and yesterday, I received two more requests, which we will fulfill this week, that will transport another fifty people. I speak to these numbers because this is beyond the, the regular schedule that these volunteers are doing five days a week. That bus is out by days a week. Some days, we have both buses going out because they're going in two different directions at a time, not just the seniors, but also the schools, that adhere, the firehogs have been part of that when they're using the train, uh, little peaks respond to that. Uh, so the buses are definitely again of usage from multiple organizations. It's not just the dedicated, just so it's on, you know, come back with all that.
Great. I'm looking forward to seeing that November twentieth, which is not our next meeting. You, you know. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Did I, did I get all in favor on that yet?
Did you what?
Did I get all in favor on that?
Yeah.
I did. Okay. Thank you. Uh, New Business, that three, request from Jack Hare, Jim Locke, and Andy Ryan to discuss a proposal for homestead exemption. There's a letter of support to consider a homestead exemption on property values for full-time property residents from Richard and Rachel Madeira's thirty-one C Sprayway. Oh, we have somebody already up there. Okay, sir, just state your name and.
Jim Locke, on road. Jack Hare, who was hoping to be here, but he hasn't, but he's sort of incredibly happy to do the social events. Uh, I'm going to try to be brief, give the late hour. Uh, first of all, if anybody wants to know, all of the slides plus additional slides are on the ballot table. So there's, there are handouts if anybody wants to look.
Well, I didn't know there was.
Mr. Locke, could you take this to do your slide?
I was hoping that John, Jonathan would stay up here to handle this. After four.
His human assistant.
So Rhode Island, uh, uh, allows a homestead exemption, and each town has its own rules for the homestead exemption. It's revenue neutral. It's a very important thing, a homestead exemption in the town of Little Compton will be revenue neutral. It will not affect our finances. At least nine different towns in the state of Rhode Island have homestead exemptions. Most of them are percentage deductions with total property account, which then provides the, um, obviously, the more valuable your home is, the more, uh, of an exemption that you get. That one of the, uh, exceptions that you'll notice is Central Falls, which has a flat exemption. Little Compton is different, as many of you in the room know. It's different than most of the other towns in Little Compton. It's a small town with very high home values. It has a very low tax rate. It probably still has the second lowest tax rate in the state, even after last year's twelve percent. Um, there are many seasonal homes, as all of you heard about earlier. Uh, the revenue of twelve percent taxing is a recent tax increase, significantly, has significantly impacted, um, middle-class people in town. One of the most frightening things about Little Compton is we really have almost no commercial tax base to rely on. So the three of us, uh, Jack Hare and Andy Ryan and I have coached, considered two different approaches. It is, so you need to know there is no perfect solution to this problem. There are going to be no, no solutions. They don't have, uh, flaws to consider. One of them is a home value exemption, in which we would subtract automatically a hundred thousand dollars from the assessed value of each, uh, um, year-round home. And the second, that we would give a fixed tax credit to households, uh, with an annual income under a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Hundred and thirty thousand dollars is pretty much exactly the median income of a family in the town of Little Compton. The home value exemptions, as I said, subtracts a hundred thousand dollars from the assessed values. It provides the greatest benefit for homes in the two hundred to six hundred thousand dollar range. Obviously, it's a much larger percentage of their tax bill. And it's very simple to administer, certainly simpler than mo, uh, most of the other things that we've looked at. The income-based tax exemption applies only if the family income is under a hundred and thirty thousand. It specifically targets working families and seniors, provides a fixed credit on a sliding scale between two hundred and six hundred dollars off of the yearly tax bill, but it requires income verification, and it raises tax rates for, um, households above the cutoff, more than the other plan. Advantage to the home, uh, benefit, uh, home value program is that it does in fact benefit most households in town. I'm guessing eighty, eighty-five percent is a hard number to come up with. It's simple, it's much less paperwork, easier for the town to manage. But it does provide a higher tax rate for non-residents, and there's no relief for residents with high-value properties. Advantage of an income tax, uh, plan, uh, of an income-based plan is it directs release to those who need it most, and it keeps a lower tax rate for higher, uh, income families. On the other hand, it really only applies to fifty percent of the residents in town as opposed to probably eighty-five. It requires income verification and paperwork, and people would obviously have to reapply after any major income changes. Uh, in order for us to adopt this kind of policy, first of all, the town council would have to approve it. The town council would then have to require or request our state representatives to draft a legislation. The legislation probably needs to be submitted early in January. You're permitted to allow for passage before the March budget, that the governor, you decided, but it would have to be approved by the financial county, we think. Does anybody have any questions in common? So I can certainly answer, and, and any, and certainly any other question.
Jim. Associated. Jim, I have a question about, so you've got the, the flat hundred thousand dollar exemption for people that claim the homestead, homestead exemption who reside in Little Compton. And for that, the people that would be. And for that, the people that would bear the grunt of the increase would be non, those like people that don't reside in Little Compton.
Yes and no. If you reside in Little Compton, if you're a full-time resident, okay? You will deal better through the plan than under the status quo. If the value of your house is less than two point one million dollars.
Okay.
So even if you are a resident, you'll pay a higher tax next year if your home is valued at three million dollars or four million.
Okay.
And then in addition, as you said, non-residents would bear more the cost of the in order for this to remain revenue neutral.
Okay. And then for the, the income-based exemption, if you, even if you're a, a town resident and you make over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, you're probably going to be bearing more of that grunt.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. I'm gonna go with this, since I spent, since we spent all this time making these extra slides in case there were questions, I'm gonna put them up anyway. Since they're having. In the five, your home is worth five hundred thousand dollars.
No, there was more.
Uh, if nothing changes, this year you're paying two thousand four hundred dollars, next year you'll pay two thousand five hundred dollars under the status quo. Under this plan, you'd pay two thousand four hundred dollars. I mean, two thousand one hundred dollars. You pay four hundred dollars less if your home is worth five hundred thousand dollars under the town. Under the income base, if your family income is less than six thousand five hundred, you have a regular six hundred. Sixty, fifty, ninety, four hundred, between ninety, one thirty, two hundred. Since the median family income in town is a hundred and thirty, half the residents receive reduced taxes and half the residents will see higher taxes. In order for us to move forward, the first thing we would have to do is decide which of these two basic approaches makes sense for the town. Because we decided it would be better to present several options rather than the same one. Is then you have to start looking at the trigger. Hundred thousand dollars for right amount for a home fix. Uh, if it's, are the income levels the right levels? Base are the tax credits for right house? Are the eligibility requirements the right? For the home base one. Your odd amount of getting a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh.
That's a, that's sort of a given if you're on the board. Round out the overall basis for you to apply for a residency. Then hopefully also get the feedback from the citizens, obviously this is an adequate sample.
Jim, are you talking to the microphone for the, the home can hear and I'm getting texts. They can't hear you.
Also other things you too.
I don't want getting any more texts.
Fucking hell, you're on.
And finally, uh, our full-time renter rental property, should they be considered for the program? And that would actually, as, as town solicitor would probably know, would be a deep niche. We have checked with the director, executive director of the League of Cities and Towns and Rhode Island, who tells us that, that there's no reason why that shouldn't or couldn't be considered at least as a for a, uh, tax exemption plan. Yes.
Do we have a question?
I'm basically not.
If someone wants to.
If anybody wants to look at others, they're on the back page.
We have a question right up.
Our son has taken, I have the opportunity, we have the opportunity to enjoy a homestead exemption when we're within products for fifteen years. A specific question over our comment, I don't know which one is better. I think that's strictly what goals this program is trying to achieve because they will be actually opposite to this whether we.
Stay on, stay in your microphone, ours, here you go. Yeah.
It will achieve two different, both are with great degree, and I don't know the numbers, to a great degree, achieve two different goal. I don't know the story for ourselves. But I think first of all, I just want to define what's the goal of this program is to decide whether A is better than B or B is better than A. Obviously, you stated income-based would be right, regardless of the stuff. Among multiple other questions are about income-based verification, people working and sporting hours who make their one thirty or one thirty-one rather than one forty-nine. I think there's problems with that, but that's not my point. I'm trying to answer your quick points to that. That's what calls it.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to go over to the microphone to speak in it? I see someone on the front.
Yeah, just sort of, uh, you can, uh, you can, uh, about the legislation. Uh, because many municipalities have written bills about this. If, if you're putting a fixed number of a bill with regard to real estate, you, you have, you want to revisit that, you have to go back and amend the legislation or not.
That's correct, yes.
But if you had a percentage problem, you wouldn't. But the percentage, uh, getting to go back is often.
Right, I, I, you know, while you're asking, I anticipated the question. I've got forty-four dash five sixty-five of the general laws up here. It's for East Greenwich. I pick East Greenwich because they have a similar form of government than, than you have here in Little Compton. And their bill that authorizes this has their exemption not to exceed twenty percent. And they can, uh, the town council there can annually fix the amount of the homestead exemption on that up to twenty percent. They want to change it, they'd have to go back to the general assembly. If you have a fixed amount, if you want to change that figure, then you would have to go back to the general assembly and get enabling legislation.
I just raised that because we've experienced this different extent with regard to our legislation, original legislation for the agricultural conservancy trust, where the bill had a fixed exemption for seventy-five thousand dollars. Real estate values tend to increase. And so I, I, I'm just concerned about locking in the number, could we come to do something like that? Provide some way for, for the town.
All right, we have someone else on the dream team that wants to speak with that.
Well, just, uh, we checked into that. Obviously, you can build into the legislation guardrails surrounding a hundred thousand dollars. So it doesn't necessarily, if you, if you make the hundred thousand dollars, as in Greenwood, East Greenwood, Greenwich, you know, up to twenty thousand, if you add a hundred thousand dollars and then tie that number to the change in real estate values, you don't necessarily have to go back to the state legislation.
And I'm not sure you understand that.
Before you speak, do we have the, did you, did you want to speak? Mike, are you speaking also? We have two. Okay, I have two, two, two on the bench.
So I, I think towards the goals of what we were thinking of, I have a lot of neighbors that are on fixed incomes. And I have seen the impact of, you know, and I, you know, so I've talked to a lot of them about their, you know, situation. I think providing some relief to full-time residents is the goal. Um, what I think is a bit odd about the percentage that towns have put in, and I don't know if it's because they don't want to have, they don't have a mechanism like we do to kind of adjust things annually, is that when you do a percentage homestead exemption, you benefit the most expensive properties the most. Uh, and so it kind of has the opposite impact generally of people who live in town or have lived in the long time that are on fixed incomes. It's not everybody. Some people are on fixed incomes that have very expensive homes because of where they are. But I think that's from my standpoint, what we're looking at. I would like us, and the, the reason I think we talked about the financial town meeting is I think you could very easily put in the legislation that the financial town meeting is the point, just like the ag tax, where you adjust things.
May I? Yes, go ahead.
I'll tell you, uh, if you take a look at the general laws, there's about eight communities that, um, have a specific general law. And it gives the legislative authority to the city or town council to adjust the homestead as it is. What I'm familiar with is the town of Lincoln, where I'm also solicitor. They have a public law, uh, uh, public law two thousand, chapter twenty-nine. And I always wondered about that. Why is that? It's because, um, uh, in that law first, to approve the homestead exemption in the first instance, the, uh, financial town meeting there, uh, had to authorize the homestead exemption. And there's language in that, uh, public law that makes it so that any changes to the homestead exemption have to be approved by the financial town meeting. So there, there's options as to how you can go on this. You can have a straight, uh, uh, something in the, in the general laws, I think is set out. Can be a percentage, it can be a fixed amount. You can go on the income, you can. There's a lot of flexibility on that, so long as you have legislative approval. Uh, you can also, uh, involve your financial town meeting. That's a policy consideration. All of these are policy considerations. And if I can, only because I'm old, um, uh, the homestead exemptions came in in the nineteen nineties. It was for single-family residences. Typically, like for instance, I'm looking at East Greenwich, they don't have, you have to live in the residence. It was for single-family homes. The feeling being that if you had a res, if you had a multifamily, then you wouldn't get the homestead exemption, you'd pay a higher rate. As time marched on, uh, the, uh, consideration was to help people that live year-round in communities. If you lived in your house, then you got the homestead exemption. That's another option that you can have. So there are a variety of things that you can do. I agree with Ara that you, first you've got to determine who you want to help by this. Once you do that, then you can tailor what the legislation will be and your ordinance will be. And towns are all over the place.
Thank you. Anyone in the back? I saw two hands.
I'd like to take a couple of notes from a, a report I have from the I double A O and it's, uh, from, actually from the Center on Budget Policy Priorities. And they basically say that flat amount value of property for tax relief re, um, gives a higher percentage of tax. A higher percentage of relief to the middle and low-income taxpayers. So flat amount, that's why the, the hundred thousand dollar base is the best. Way to go, according to them. They say that the bottom fifth of households pay ten point nine percent of the income in state and local taxes. And according to the Institute on Taxation Economic Policy, the double five point four percent figure of top, they pay, um, of top one percent pay, pay only five point four percent. So the top one percent taxpayers only paid five point four percent, the bottom paid ten point nine percent. So we're, you know, we're restricted by legislature for four percent cap. Like they said, this one, um, hundred thousand dollar base is not going to affect us money-wise, budgetary-wise, and it's going to help some of the people in this town. My point.
Thank you, Mike.
I guess I'm a little teetering on this because we're talking about two different things, right? Once income base, and once a flat hundred thousand deduction on property values, if I understand them correctly, assessed value. So if everybody was to get a hundred thousand dollar deduction on their assessed value, I would have been making up that funny debt and would not be getting, who's going to be paying that, the difference on that?
So nothing happens. If we don't change anything, next year with the four percent, everybody is going to like it.
Okay, we're gonna have to share the microphone. Texts are coming in.
We don't do anything with a homestead exemption. Next year, everybody in town will see their military go from seven point, four point seven nine to four point nine seven. Okay, that'll be a four percent increase in their property tax. If we adopt a home value plan for people, for the entire town, the military will actually go up four point nine seven to five point two. For people whose houses are less than two point one million dollars in assessed value, before the increased military rate will be more than offset by the hundred thousand dollar deduction. So the additional money in order to pay for the homestead exemption will come from two sources. First of all, people who don't live in town. Second of all, people whose property values are assessed at more than two point one million dollars.
And those assumptions, or those responses are based on what assumption about the budget change that might occur that, in that given?
We are assuming we have dialed in a four percent increase in the tax rate for next year.
I'm talking about what the budget change would be. Because what we, what we typically undergo is a budget that is built on assumptions of, first of all, the budget, because last minute things come in on the budget, including at the financial town meeting. And secondly, we also have, uh, the ability of the state to change its state aid. So my point is only, I, I'm not disputing your number, but I think it's, it's fair to say that would be if things that are, uh, known in March remain that way in June, uh, in May, when the meeting occurs.
So you're absolutely right, Bob. All of the numbers that I just gave are estimates.
Okay.
And all of those numbers can go upward to the four point nine seven, could go up or down a few cents based on the considerations that you have. And the same thing is true for the five point two oh, that's an estimate. But it's, it's, um, it allows us to be confident. So last year or this, this, this year, your real estate property, uh, acts generated almost, almost exactly fifteen million dollars. Next year, under all three plans, it'll generate fifteen point six million dollars, which is four percent more than last year. All three plans do the same thing. Thanks.
Kind of a question, um, and, and I, I appreciate Larry's comment and concern about the logistics of having to go back to the general assembly to, to adjust that hundred thousand if we were to go with the flat rate, which to my, uh, thinking makes the most sense, the flat rate mode, um, it mainly because of who it, who it primarily benefits. Um, would it be possible for us to do, rather than a hundred thousand, say it was, um, like chained to a percentage of median wholesale price for the prior year? So for instance, if median wholesale price is a hundred thousand dollars in Little Compton, which I think it's pretty darned close to, maybe it's ten percent of that, I mean, a, a million dollars, ten percent of that's a hundred thousand. And then each year it could kind of float along and then we wouldn't have to make the change at the general assembly. It could just be relative to our market.
You know what's wrong with that suggestion? Andy didn't think of it.
He can't let me have it.
Do I have a deal with Jim? Uh, I will say that I would, I think if you encourage people to come to the financial town meeting to make these decisions, you'll get better participation at the financial town meeting. You'll have more people show up and engage in the government. Um, which is not necessarily a bad thing, although you can't guarantee it's not a bad. But, but we have this really unique financial town meeting. And we use it for the ag trust. We can make changes to the ag trust any year we want to. Somebody can stand up and change the address. And so why not allow the citizens, right, with discussion and help from the town council, the budget committee, to make that decision at the financial town meeting of what they want at that, at that time? So because property values go up and down, and so you're right, there needs to be a mechanism to, to, to change it or, or become stale. Um, but, but that, that's my recommendation. Your, your suggestion is exceptional because it kind of allows it to naturally float as property value goes up and down. And somebody just has to, you know, calculate the median and put a number.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep, go ahead. Uh, then Travis, I'm pleased to be joined. Thank you for putting this together. Like others, two options, much like dessert, there's cake and pie. So you have to choose. If we are going to capture the most full-time residents, I do like the flat rate deduction rather than the income base that I kind of will go back to my municipal restores piece. That seems to be a lot of legwork there. And then ours piece. That seems to be a lot of like work there, and then ours piece. Capitalistic society, we don't want people trying to stay under a threshold. We want the best for everyone. Um, and then to your point, Victoria. You are you are right in the wheelhouse with the median spot. Uh, we're at nine hundred and forty three thousand dollars. Last year, the year prior, we were at nine seventy six, so. It's if it could be a fluctuating scale. I know that we're sensitive about going back and forth to the legislature. As we understand it though, as Andy said, we would be able to do this at the financial town meeting following. Do they have to vote on this every year, or is this something that they can empower us to do?
You can't deviate from the grant that you get from the general assemblies.
Okay, so whatever decision we make on how to do, whether it's. Income based, median, home price based, or flat rate. That would be how we have to proceed moving forward. We wouldn't be able to.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
And by the way, the percentage that they have. Up to these other communities. That's the thirty percent, so it doesn't go with what the values are.
Yeah.
It's fixed at the thirty percent.
Yeah, I was shocked to see Lincoln's thirty five percent. That's pretty.
They're very generous.
Yes, very generous.
But it's only for people that live there. So if you have a rental property. Multifamily, which there's a lot of there, and if you don't live there, then you're paying the higher rate. That's the people who live there full time. That's why it's thirty five percent.
Correct, and I went, uh, one final piece, your final question that Jim noted was. In some municipalities, if there is a full time rental. They would benefit from the. What is your understanding of that as a lead? I mean, just how that kind of falls, because that is a a unique wrinkle. Uh, families in there, uh, maybe not necessarily the owner or family member of the owner. Uh, the owner is collecting rental income to be also.
That was a correct statement.
Yeah.
Some of the communities have it that you get the homestead exemption. If you have a residential property with less than five units. Like they have a two family, a three family, you don't even live there, you get a homestead exemption. There are some communities like that that was a correct statement.
I like how that could incentivize folks to go away from the short term and then go to the long term rental i- in the possibility of bringing children and families into the town, which could benefit our school system. Thank you.
Take care of you. You know, I've been cutting for a lot of time.
I'll stand here and kick some ass and say.
I think the uh, income approach. Probably should be a- avoided for two, two reasons. One, it's administratively complex. Uh, it is uh. Dynamic in nature as each person's annual income goes up or down depending on what what they are. So it's a continuing work burden. Uh, to do it. It also has a political effect, and the guy who piss off the most is the guy that makes a hundred and thirty thousand and one dollar. I mean, it's sort of like that they're they're completely screwed. Um, so I I think that the most equitable. For the greatest number of people would be the fixed. Amount, and I would recommend that, subject to the other conversation, is it's a dollar amount within a percentage range. Uh, you know, fixed annual by either the town council or the uh, financial town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else? Not seeing anyone else.
I I want to make one last comment. That is that. As Victoria pointed out. Hundred thousand dollar deduction off the base of this town is just about ten percent. And that's at the lo- very lowest limit of what everybody else in the state is doing. So this isn't. This is a modest proposal that we're starting. We're not starting with the twenty or thirty or thirty five percent. It's a proposal that we can go up and down from as time moves on.
Thank you.
Can I can I make one one more comment? Jim, hey Jim, I have one more question for you. Is there, was there any consideration paid to the fact that there are a fair number of homes in this community that. Aren't um, habitable year round? Saying they don't have heating systems, so a lot of homes have been used purely as summer homes in this community and don't, they can't even be. Uh, lived in in the winter months or the off season, so I don't know. Is that something we want to consider bringing into this conversation?
So I guess what what we had thought, and actually Denise helped us with this. We had thought that the simplest way to decide who's a full time resident is if you're a voter. If you're on the voter roll, boom, you're through the door. The the next question is, if you're not a voter and you still want to be called a full time resident. How do you administer that in a reasonable fashion? And I think that's one of the things that needs to be discussed and decided. And and your your example of homes that may or may not be available in January. Uh, would be the subset, I think, of of that discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I would like to make a motion to name an ad hoc advisory committee. Charging the committee, bringing back a recommendation to the town council at our next meeting. Concerning the household of the house, the homestead exception. Rowan. And that committee I would like to name would be Jack Garrett, Jeff Locke, Andy Ryan. Gary Benrotis, Denise Cosgrove.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other further? Discussion on this one? I'm seeing any, all favor.
Hi.
Anybody?
The only concern I have, I can make afternoon meetings first thing in the morning. Afternoon, after three o'clock is fine with me, any day, it's only okay. As long as Andy and I don't get into a wrestling match.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Go, we're gonna. Air in these, we're going to try and set up local meetings.
Yeah, that's fine.
But you can discuss that later. Don't go to that microphone. All right, new business five, authorized town clerk to advertise. Here those applications received for renewal of a retail beverage license during a hearing to be held on November sixth, twenty twenty five. The twenty twenty five, twenty six license period. Have a motion.
So, so no.
Have a second.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Letter for, letter of request from Greenwood Chicken seeking approval for use of the creative seafood M and B at Young Family Bar. Apple West two sixty West Van Rowan, October eleventh, twelve, twenty twenty five. And Little Compton of Starred Society at five forty eight West, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve with all the necessary state and local ordinances here too. Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Communications, request. From the Young Family Farm for two single day entertainment license for October eleven. And October twelve, or Apple Picking Festival at the farm at two sixty West Van Rowan. A motion.
Motion to approve with all necessary state and local ordinances adhered to.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
All right, thank you.
Communications two, letter received from Charles and Joanne Gregory. Requesting for a plaque to honor Robert Har. I'll make a uh. A motion to send that to the recreation committee for their recommendation to second.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Thank you.
Who was the first on that?
Patrick.
Patrick, to me, thank you.
Sense.
Bush place consent, Gallagher on file, unless anybody wants to point anything, consideration.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Payment of bills.
Bush pay bills is written.
Favor. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor. Uh, thank you.
On before nine o'clock.
Not bad, not bad.